I'm sure others will trickle in. I'm John Foreman, Strategic Manager for Talent and also the Indoor Performance Director. We've got our beach performance director Kirk Pittman here with us. And for her very last town hall meeting, we've got Kerry, many of you know through correspondence and in other ways. For those who haven't heard, Kerry is going to be stepping down in about a month's time to go on to a much more exciting and enjoyable life, traveling the world, or at least the UK, wherever she feels like going. So we are looking for somebody to fill Kerry's shoes as big as they are. So if you or somebody you know might be interested, make sure to go to the vacancies part of volleyball england.org and check out what we're looking for and the kind of position requirements and all that. And feel free to reach out to us at talent@volleyballengland.org if you have any questions or anything about that, as always. First, a little housekeeping thing. In order to ask a question, which we strongly encourage if you have any, please use the Q and A function. You should see that kind of in the icon bar. Use Q and A instead of chat because then we'll be monitoring the Q and A and the chat is more for discussions amongst the participants on the side. If there's people that maybe you want to talk to online, I don't know. Your choice, but like I said, please use the Q and A if you want to put a question in and put them in anytime. We'll have a specific Q and A part at the end, but if there's something that comes up along the way that we can address in that moment, that's fine too. So with that, we'll get this going. The first thing we're going to look at here is just kind of an update on our recent competitions. The under 19s just came back from Faroe Islands where the guys got a good performance. It's relatively young group. All of them were under 18 actually in an under 19 competition and managed to win the bronze medal in the kind of three, four playoff. The women's team also had a strong finish, taking fifth, winning the five, six playoff. So, you know, as, as we would always expect with these sorts of things, you know, there were positives, there were negatives, you know, things we can get better at, things we're doing well. These are all developmental experiences, so that's what we fully expect. Couple of weeks earlier, the under 17s were in Denmark for their version of Nevza. Their, what was it? I think with the boys finished fifth, Kerry, if I remember correctly, and the girls finished eighth. Am I have that right? I think that's right. But again, you know, positives, things we could be better at, all of these things. This is, this is not a qualifying year for Nevza. So this is very much a developmental year, bring the players along, give them that international competition experience. Some of the, the under 19s, this would be their fourth Nevza overall, which means probably at this point, they're, they're now time to move on to the next age group. But others, this was their first and hopefully, you know, one of, of many that they'll have. Looking ahead from an indoor perspective, we've got the Five Nations Tournament. It's going to be the first weekend of January. You've probably seen some of promotion of that in the socials and in emails and such. And I'm sure you'll, you'll catch more of it. Definitely go to the volley store to get some tickets. All, both our men's and women's teams will be taking part. The schedule hasn't been set yet, but obviously once it's out, we'll get it out there so everybody will know. It might be nice to have, you know, an international competition on home soil. Obviously we'll look forward to England dominating as we should, hopefully. You know, if everything goes well, actually it's likely that both the men and women are also going to be competing in the Novotel Tournament that same weekend, just happens to be that same weekend. As you might recall, the men won that for the first time last year. So that was kind of a really nice launch to their, their 2024 campaign, which has had some, some pretty interesting developments along the way. So hopefully, you know, the combination of events will be good experiences for both the, the players that go to, to both of them and the coaches as well. Kirk, you want to hit on what's been going on the beach recently?
Yeah, obviously we had the King of the Court in Canary Wharf in, in London, which was a, which was great for, for our athletes to compete with some really top international pairings. So that was a, was a great event. Currently on the, on the world tour, Joel Passau in Brazil Elite 16, the Bellows are there competing and they've got Rio, another Elite 16 event here to kind of, I think the last event for the Elite 16s. So the, the kind of season is wrapping up and coming to the end of the year. So they'll be looking to finish strong there. And a Nevza tournament indoor beach facility in Gothenburg in Sweden has just finished. So we had four teams there, two men, two women's teams there with, and one of our women's teams of Alice and Kirsty finished fifth in the quarterfinals. So a good little showing there. And currently with our junior pathway at the moment, we just finished with coaches and myself and Kerry and going through a review process as we always do after the season. So, and we're currently working on the, on the calendar for next year around what the events and how it would look like with all, how that's all going to fit together. So we're pretty close to, to hopefully getting that going because we want to be getting that earlier. So then we can start to put our domestic kind of camps together because they always attach leading into tournaments. So yeah, that's where we're, and we're also going through and reviewing our selection policies as well. So that's kind of where we're at with and on the, the beach, junior beach pathway and beach volleyball at the moment.
Okay, thanks Kirk. And one of the, the things, one of the developments, and I brought this up before, but I just want to kind of bring it back up because it relates to next year's calendar, is CEV earlier this year made the decision that much like they've done indoors, they're going to make zonal qualification for the under 18s and under 20 euros as, as a first round qualifier. Those who, who don't know, the way it's worked up to now is that basically Euros has just been a single event. You either based on your rankings, your country rankings, went straight into the main draw or you went through qualification the day before, much like you'd see in Elite 16 or one of the other FIVB Pro Tour events. Now that they've introduced this first zonal layer, the way it's going to work, and hopefully I explain this in a fairly clear fashion. Charlie the other day thought this was more confusing than me describing something about baseball to him, so I'll, I'll do my best. So there are six zones. Each of them will be able to put forward two teams out of their qualifier into the main draw. So theoretically that's 12 teams. Then a next 10 teams or more will be added based on the country rankings. So those are based on how you've done in prior Euros at your age group level. Now, the reason I say 10 or more is because if a zone doesn't run a qualification tournament, so they don't determine the two teams to go through, those two spots will get rolled into this, this country ranking group. So ultimately out of the zonal qualification and the country rankings, you're going to end up with 22 teams. The host country also gets two, so that gets you up to 24. And then there will be a qualification tournament the day before the main draw where eight more teams will be determined and that will get you up to your 32. So we have the, the Nevza Junior Beach Tournament scheduled for late June, early July already, again at Bridlington like it was this year. What we don't know is the timings of next year's Euro tournaments. Those won't be decided until the hosts are determined because the hosts ultimately dictate when the, the tournaments actually take place. It could be anywhere between June and August. Traditionally tends to be late June and into July, but there's, there's no reason why it couldn't be different. So we're waiting to hear on that and how that impacts the Nevza Junior Tournament that we're hosting as to whether it falls in the qualification window. Is it going to be far enough in advance of the under 18 and under 20 Euro tournaments that it could count as qualification or not? We'll, we'll keep everybody posted on that because obviously if it isn't, then we're going to have to look at zonal qualification in a different way. But again, we, we wait until CEV gives us the news on that and then we'll let everybody know and we'll make plans on how all that works. So feel free to shoot any questions our way on that. I'll do my best to try to explain, but hopefully that was as, as clear as we can make it right now. So moving on, just to give you a sense of what the indoor calendar looks like moving ahead, we've got December camp at the MVC, 27th to 30th of December, so right after the holiday. April camp is currently booked again at the MVC for the 12th to the 15th. Euro qualification for the U22s is likely to take place in July. That's normally when it happens. So again, that hasn't been announced yet, so we'll, you know, we'll let everybody know once that comes up. Currently we're looking to do the August camp, which is the Nevza Selection Camp, again at the end of August, tentatively the 29th to, actually it should probably be the 28th to the 31st, but in that timeframe, so very end of August. So it's after the beach stuff, but with enough time to do actual preparation for next year's Nevza, which is the next thing on here. Nevza 2020, 2025 will again be in October unless they make a radical change, which we don't expect. Next year's under 17s Nevza will be an under 18 qualifier for Euros for the following year for 2026, like was the case last year in 2023. The difference between next year and last year is it won't be a qualifier for the under 19s and to the under 20 Euros, that's a year later. So basically, starting from next year, we're going to have alternating years where either the under 17s or the under 19 Nevza will be a qualifier for the next year's Euro Tournament. It's more complicated than it probably needs to be, but that's the way the CEV and FIVB have developed the calendar. We're working on a February trip or February weekend of some kind with the teams or with the players to get some potentially overseas training, you know, if we can make the logistics work, because it's, it's part of our, our desire to get more overseas experience for our athletes and this is an opportunity for that. And we may also look to do something in the summer. Obviously there's beach considerations in there, so those of our athletes who are very much beach focused would stick with the beach focus and the players who are just strictly indoor players would be the ones that would be, you know, looking at for that summer trip. Again, we don't have specific plans in place. We're just in the process of working through when that could be, where that could be. Obviously we need to look at school calendars and availability and all of that. So, but the, the primary dates, you know, these first, the, the next big camp dates are pretty much set. You know, the, the August one, we, we just have to make sure we get it set with the MVC and clarify. So again, any questions there, let us know. Uh, next thing, I want to talk about just this kind of this, the age group thing. And this obviously ties in with Nevza to a certain degree. The way the system right now is, you know, for those who've been around for a while, there was the cadets and the juniors, under 17s, under 19s or under 18s and under 20s. We're basically thinking of those groups as under 18s and under 20s because of Euros, because those are the cohorts that are going to challenge for Euros. The difficulty because of the thing that I talked about before with kind of alternating years as to what's a Euro qualifier is we can't just define those in nice discreet two year cohorts. There's going to be overlap. So for example, next year, it's the 2009s and younger that will be eligible to play in the qualifier as under 17s. But the following year, it'll be the 2008s and younger, which brings in the 2009s potentially, who will compete as under 19s for the under 20 qualifier. And then again, kind of flip around, the 2009s who would play in that two years later would still be eligible to play in the next under 20. So there's going to be some of that sort of stuff. So these age group definitions are going to be a bit fluid, which, you know, administratively makes our lives not as easy as we would like, but it's the reality. Under 22s for next year, because it's based on the under, the 2026 Euros, that's going to be 2005 and younger. So mostly 05, 06, potentially some 07s. I think both the men and the women have a few 07s that are in the mix to potentially be part of that qualification. With the under 22s, there is no Nevza, there is no zonal qualification. There's just simply one qualification around the summer before and then the main draw. I put the U16s on here with some question marks because CEV does run a U16 Euro. It's, it's pretty new, so they haven't done it before. They had done it under 17 before, but that was before they, you know, rejiggered the age groups that I talked about. It's something we're not looking at right now, but it is something we're thinking about moving forward, particularly with some of the things that we want to do in the pathway to create this kind of talent zone concept that we're working through that could involve, you know, different zones and a younger age group than kind of we're getting right now with the full national team. So consider it kind of a bridge between the under 17s and kind of younger juniors as a, as a preparation phase, which at some point we might consider taking into a competitive situation and putting it, putting them into Euro qualification. So hopefully that is clear as mud and everybody understands it all perfectly. All right. The other big project that we're working on in the office particularly is Perf Book, which is our new athlete management system. We've all gone through a bunch of training and are really getting things organized and ramped up in how we use it. It covers the whole pathway, indoor and beach, senior, all the way down to the youngest juniors that we've got in the pathway. The plan is to really get it integrated with the, with the December camp for the under 18s and under 20s and also start getting the seniors rolled into it. There's a lot of potential for us to use it in different player development ways. In a sense, part of it is kind of like a Dropbox or a Google Drive where we can put a lot of content for all of the athletes in the, in the pathway for educational purposes, for informational purposes. So we're working to start filling that out and that, that'll be an ongoing thing for sure. But there's also tools in there for athletes to use for themselves, whether it be putting video up and using the editing tools to create highlight clips and, and other things and asking the coaches for feedback or sharing with other people that they, they might want to share with. Obviously got calendars and things where there's some questionnaire based stuff that we want it, we want to integrate in terms of some kind of health and welfare, feedback, all these other things that we're really working to integrate progressively in the pathway could really get linked into Perf Book. So for those of you who, who are, were in the pathway and haven't yet kind of played around with it yet, we encourage you to do so. You know, get your, get your photo up on there, make sure all your information is in there as correct as you can get it. We're working to do the same thing with everybody that's on the system. It's nearly 300 people at this point, but we're really, really excited for what it's going to be able to do for us administratively and player support and all of that. Because we think, like I said, it can, it can take us a long way down the path of, of what we want to do, what we want to be as a national pathway. So that covers really the updates at this point, which opens us up to the opportunity to do Q and A. And let's see, we've got some stuff come in. Kerry, do, is there any questions that came in earlier today that we, we didn't hit on so far in the presentation that you want to make sure we get to?
No, most of the questions that came in were around schedule and that's been covered.
Very good. All right. So we had a question on if you're an 07, there won't be any Nevza qualifiers until U22. Yes, that's correct. You're still eligible to play in Nevza next year, but that won't be a qualifier year for you as an under 19. Unfortunately, when FIVB and CEV did the, the little trick with the, the age groups, the, the 2007s were the ones that kind of got caught in the wrong side of it. So you won't have an under 20 cycle, qualification cycle. Your, your next phase will be the, the under 22s. So which is why, yeah, I kind of talked about, there'll be some 07s that'll be part of the under 22s for next year's qualification. But even, even those who aren't, there'll be another qualification that they'll be eligible for in 2027, which will be your primary U22 year. Okay. Yes, Alex, the, the whole age group thing, we're, one thing I didn't mention that we're working on the background and the, the communications guys are, are really working on this is we're revamping the whole talent part of the website because frankly, it's not been very useful for quite a while now. Hopefully some, some bits have already been kind of been rolled out, but Matt on the comms team is working on the structure and working on the content. So hopefully fairly soon, all of that stuff will be up there and we'll have different pieces on what the pathway looks like, how the age groups work and the different competitions we're in and, and all of that. All right. There, there is an event for tomorrow at 30. Actually, I think somebody, one of the athletes put some stuff on their calendar and basically tagged in a, a number of other people. So that's not, that's not something that we did. Volleyball England didn't do that. That's, that came from one of the athletes. Not sure why they did that. Maybe they don't realize they did that. But yeah, it was, it was kind of something that chuckled about, oh, why is this here? Uh, okay. Wait a minute, let me scroll back here. All right. If not invited to the Younger Christmas Camp, will be, there be some other guidance on Perf Book? So if you're on Perf Book now, and there are people that were invited that aren't able to come to camp, and so we know that not everybody in the pathway and on Perf Book is going to be a camp. So there is a training session that was recorded by one of, basically the salesperson that, that we use to get Perf Book sorted out for us. And it's, it's really nicely done. It progresses through like all the major functionality and the tools that athletes can use. So if you go into Perf Book, there is a section, you go to files, I mean, I'm going to bring this up on my screen just to make sure I get this right, not that. So go into Perf Book, go to files. It's going to make me log in, I think. Yeah. So dead air for a moment here. Yeah, almost there. Okay. Yeah. So you go to files, you click on team files. That's the stuff that we will, will all share internally. There's, you'll see a folder in there called Perf Book Athlete Training. And inside the folder, there is an athlete training video that you can definitely, I definitely encourage you to look at. It's very well done. And obviously if you have any questions about that, you can email and we can, we can try to answer those for you. What's the difference between Perf Book and Huddle? So as I said, Perf Book is an athlete management system. So there's a, there's a massive amount of information that's going to be kept in there, both for our use administratively, but also as I kind of mentioned, that whole Dropbox, Google Drive sort of thing where we're sharing with you. Huddle is basically is just a video sharing platform. Now Perf Book also has a video sharing platform in it and they're, they're not linked or related in any, in any sort of way. We use Huddle for VE for, you know, you, you might know, be familiar with it from competitions perspective because they use it for the Super League, for video exchange and for stats and all that. Now this year, they're using it for Super Series for the under 18s. So kind of more than doubled the number of, of clubs that are engaged there. And for the national teams, we also use it a bit for scouting and breaking down film, which is not something we currently have set up in, in Perf Book. We can do it ourselves. You can go in, in any video that you have access to and tag it like you were tagging, you know, any other match video in this very similar sort of way. We just don't have it set up so that it's done for us. So that's, that's the major difference. Uh, April camp, yes, we have, and there's a reason why we're not doing it Easter weekend. So for those who haven't looked in the QA, have you considered the amount of clubs taking athletes to Italy? So that was obviously an issue for, for April camp this past year, where several clubs took, took teams to Italy for a tournament. We specifically separated ourselves away from Easter weekend just to avoid that conflict. All right. What else has come through? Yeah, I'm going back. I think I, I answered that question, Kobe, on training on Perf Book. The video is already in there. Okay. In the first town hall, we had some discussions on whether it could be parent representation on talent pathway meetings. Do you have any more? Not right now. We're still kind of working through this player community process. Gwyn is, is leading that up and there's some things going on. Pretty sure this month they've got meetings happening. So there's some linkage to that, but we just also had a bunch of other things that, that have kind of pushed that down on the priority list. But there is, one of the things that we need to do is right now, we don't have a lead for the talent working group, which is obviously an ideal place to have parent representation. But nobody put in for it, so it couldn't be voted on at the last board meeting. So again, this is another one of those things. If, if there's somebody out there that has an interest in being the lead for the talent working group, so we can kind of get that back engaged the way we need it to be, definitely reach out because that, that's a vacancy that we really want to get filled. Second, next question, anything the boys can do to best prep for camp? Kerry? What are, what are the issues that we usually run into with people who are not prepared for camp?
It's just making sure they've got the correct equipment with them really. Obviously everything will be supplied for them when it comes to accommodation, food, but just making sure that they're rested, they've eaten well, and they're good to go and they bring a very large bottle.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just thinking in terms of, one of the things that's come up and Phil Crawford has specifically talked about this with the boys is that, you know, preparation for camp goes, goes deeper than obviously the administrative things that Kerry's talked about and kind of having the right equipment and all that. It's actually doing the physical things that you need to be ready for the fact that you're going to a four day camp. Now it's a little bit easier in, you know, in December, when you're kind of in the middle of your season, although, you know, who knows what's going to happen over the, you know, over Christmas with family meals and, and all that and all the sweets. So we probably do recommend we're a little careful about what you eat and drink in that timeframe. But it's, it's a physical thing and that's something that athletes need to be ready for. We don't have competitions in this country that, that are multi-day aside from interregionals. And that's sort of a one and a half day thing. The reason we went to these longer camps is because like Nevza that we just went through, three day tournament. Most of the teams played five matches. So twice they played two matches in a day, best of fives, not best of threes. And, you know, our normal competition schedule just isn't set up for that. And it's the same thing with our beach athletes. You go to, you go to Nevza, you go to Euros, you're playing three days. You go to some of the other events and you might be playing four or five days, some, some of the bigger events. Under 20 Euros that were hosted in Dublin over the summer, that was basically two weeks. They played, I think, seven matches over that time. That's a long event, you know, playing just about every day or almost you're close to it. So then that's why we, we set these camps up to, to give the athletes kind of that sense of what it's like to be in these multi-day events so they can think more about how they have to prepare for that experience and what they have to do during the experience to be recovered. And this is, this is, it's timely conversation because I, you know, in speaking to the coaches that were at Nevza, you know, last month. And this is, this is, it's timely conversation because I, you know, in speaking to the coaches that were at Nevza, you know, last month. Athletes not taking care of recovery was an issue. There was, one of the coaches told me explicitly. That they talked to the players about, hey, you need to go rest, recover, be ready because you have to play in the morning. And the players did take that on board. They were probably up later that night. They're burning energy. And as a result, they did not have a good match the next day. So. Part of camp, the part of the camp experience is is being able to prepare for those sorts of situations. Okay, where am I going? Here we go. Did you suggest suggested athletes would have to select indoor or beach? I remember to do both at the moment. Uh depending on when things happen, there may be the need to make a choice. Obviously, priorities are pri- are are always a consideration in here. There are, there are always going to be times when we run into conflicts. Uh we had it just with Nevza. Where one of our athletes could have gone to Nevza as an indoor player, but because her priority was beach. She had to pull out of the squad to play in a beach tournament. So it's it's part of the equation. It's something that we we try to avoid forcing. Uh but it, you know, it is a reality of the situation. It's probably going to become more of an issue. As things like B C U with the indoor courts. Gets developed and beach becomes more available as a tw- as a twelve month sort of thing. Um but that's, we'll get there when we get there. When the athletes that have been referred by coaches uh will be informed. If an athlete is referred by a coach, we respond to the coach. We don't respond to the athlete. Okay, if the coach then wants to feed back to the athlete, that's entirely their call. We do that because we don't know if if the athletes have been are in aware of being um. Referred and we don't want to be in a situation where we're surprising people with things. Um if there's somebody that we're going to invite to camp, that's been referred, where that invitation will go to that athlete and their. And their family directly. Uh there's a couple of referrals that need to be looked through. So there might be some invitations coming out. But that that'll happen in the next day or two, if that's the case. Uh are the U twenty twos invited to December camp? Um if you mean for the juniors. If they're invited to to a U twenty two training, then, you know, it's they're they're with U twenty twos. So right now, what we're kind of looking at, the O sixes are already in the U twenty two grouping. Because they're no longer age eligible for under eighteen or under twenty, under seventeen, under nineteen stuff moving forward. So if you're, if you're an O seven who hasn't been selected. Into the U twenty two group by the senior national team coaches, because they're the ones who do that selection. Then you're still up, you're still eligible to be in the juniors for another year. And then at which point you're potentially uh moved up. When did you send out emails regarding perf book? Um many times. Carrie, you just or Hannah just sent something out last week. There's been. Several of them over the last few weeks, I I believe.
There there has been, um and and I've. Where's it Simone, is it? Simone, I then I'll email you reference because you have got an account on there for Albert. So I'll I'll email you again and make sure you know what the login is. It may have gone into your junk folder, the one for registration.
Okay. Uh will there be a physio camp? That is indeed the plan. We always, that's the plan always for all of our our England stuff. There are times, you know, there have been times where we haven't been able to get somebody. And once or twice, the person we got fell through or couldn't make it or or whatever. Which obviously is not ideal situation. But yeah, it it is our intention to always have a physio or. Um sport therapist or something equivalent at at all of our national team camps. Um I understand many of the older boys aren't going to be at December camp. Why is that? What are the aims of December camp? So the O sevens that were in the Nevza team, the under nineteen Nevza team just last week. Um because we know who they are, there there are no quantity. So we don't need to see them again. So we basically said. Okay, this camp, December, is is going to be an opportunity for us to look at, uh you know, players who were not. In consideration for for selection for Nevza this time around. So they'd say, for example, weren't at the August, at the August camp, which was selection. So there's there's players that we need to see um to see how they've progressed, how they've developed in in the na- the national team context. Um you know, we took this as an opportunity to give these players a chance to, you know, enjoy their holidays, not spend. Money on camp during, you know, a time of year when I'm sure a lot of people would rather not spend extra money. But we did say to them, you know, if you really do want to come to camp. And there are openings, then, you know, you're you're happy to attend. And Carrie, I don't think anybody's taken us up on that invitation, has they?
No, they haven't, no.
No. So it sounds like people are are looking forward to having a bit of a break. Uh how do we know uh if we're being moved up or being released? Uh moved up, um the under twenty two me- the men. Have already told us who they've got in their on their under twenty two list for O sevens. And all of those players have been invited to stuff before. So there's, there's no new invitations that have gone out so far that we're aware of. I'm waiting to hear from the women as to which O sevens they've got on the list. Now, that doesn't mean if you didn't get moved up as an O seven, you're you're cut. And that's and that's that because like I said, we've got another year that O sevens are eligible to play in Nevza. And, you know, we're looking to keep the 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 players that are potential U twenty two players in the next cycle. In for another year to develop and come along and and all of that. Um. Yeah, in terms of O sixes, on the men's side, the O sixes already. Have already been invited to camps and so they're they're already in that mix pretty firmly. Again, same sort of thing. We're waiting to hear from um the women as to who they're. They're they're going to roster or at least bring into the U twenty two cohort for the O sixes. Um so. You might hear about that at the same time as we do. Um. Yeah, yeah, that's just where they are right now in in their timeline of making decisions. So that's the last of the questions that have been put in so far.
We have one that you've not answered, John. Uh Richard Ollie down um a little bit down. It says, as a national performance program, expected to get results at international competitions. Are are we able to train together more than four times a year?
So correction right there. The purpose of the talent pathway is to develop athletes for the senior national team. That's why it exists. That's its sole purpose. Competition is part of that development process. So it is not the goal of of the under seventeens, the under eighteens, under twenties, whatever, to win competitions. Obviously, we want them to do as well as possible. And we will use our 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 results in competition as indicators of where we are in that development process. But it's not about winning or losing. It's about player development uh through the pathway. So another couple came in. Um if uh two, if an O seven has been invited to U twenty two training, is their time with U twenties finished? Uh or they could, could this still be for Nevza twenty fives? Uh the potential is there. If if the senior coaches don't think that O seven is ultimately ready. To to stay with that U twenty two cohort, you know, through through qualification next summer. Then there's certainly a possibility of bringing them back into the fold. With the U twenties um for for the under nineteen qual- um the Nevza tournament next year. But as long as they're going to be primarily U twenty two, then we won't bring them into the junior stuff. They need to be doing the 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 U twenty two stuff slash senior stuff because there's there's quite a bit of all that. Um next one. If uh two thousand eight, not Nevza, wants to join December camp for a consideration, is that still possible? The camp camp things are always invitation based. So if you got an invitation, then you're eligible to come to camp. Um if if you turn down the invitation and things have changed, then certainly reach out to the talent email address. And and let us know that. Uh if a player is never selected for an England camp, do you then release them or keep them? At a certain point, if we don't see somebody being invited to camp. Then yeah, we will release them off the pathway. Because, you know, that's, uh uh if if the judgment is. At that time, we don't see the future of them being, you know, representing England. And and what we mean by that is long term. You know, because like I said, the whole purpose of the pathway is developing senior national team athletes. If we don't see somebody kind of fulfilling the expectations and. And the the kind of the physical, technical, tactical requirements of of doing so. Then there's really no sense in in keeping them on the pathway um any longer. So we will on uh in those situations. Um remove them. And we will let them know, you know, when, if and when that happens. If somebody's very excited about beach volleyball next year. Big exclamation point. Uh how do we make the U twenty two coaches more aware of us or is that all done through U twenties? How you how you do with your club? Uh is 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 definitely a part of it because the national team coaches do look at club performance. When, you know, they're making their selections. Now, they also take into consideration what the the younger age group coaches have to say. You know, how did somebody perform at Nevza? What are they like in training camp? Those sorts of things. And also, you know, bring into consideration discussion with with coaches at the club level and all that. So it's. It's not just one source of info that they're looking at, but ultimately, play well, perform well. Make yourself, you know, stand out in that regard and you'll get their attention. Information for the U twenty two women's appears very slow. Can this be improved? I hope so. Because it's, you know, it is definitely something that is kind of glacial at this point in time. Um is U twenty two still part of the pathway? Yes, yes, it is. It just. It's just attached to the seniors. Um as opposed to kind of being attached to the younger age groups. And that, and you know, that's reflective of of kind of where those athletes are age wise, because mostly you're talking about. Uni athletes, you know, fully adults, over eighteen athletes. Um so there's, you know, a a kind of a different expectation in terms of maturity, level of play, all of that. So it it makes sense for them. To be connected with the the senior teams. Who are frankly, in a lot of cases, players that they might be playing with at the club level or at the uni level or or whatever. All right. Have a minute. Okay, there's one more here. How do older players such as O five, O six have the opportunity to get on the pathway? Um uh like kind of like I said, yes, there is, there still is a coach referral. And we've had one or two of those come in for for older players. So club coaches can still do that. But again, a lot of it is. Um our senior national team coaches are involved with the N V L, Super League, all that. So they see the players. They have access to to huddle, so they can go in and look at anybody. Um that, you know, they they want to see. Uh so it is, it comes down to mainly just stand out as a as an English player in competition. And, you know, you can certainly, if you have highlight video, you can pass that along as well. There's there's no issue with that. And that's, you know, this is part of what we're we're using per- a perf book for, we're going to be using perfect for in the pathway. Is being able to capture those sorts of videos, share them with the staff. Use them for checking on referrals, use them for getting feedback to the athletes. From the coaches and and all all of the other things that can go along with that. Right, and another one. So is there juniors, U twenty two, U twenty uh? Yeah, I would say. Yep, seniors in U twenty two are separate from juniors. Kind of broadly speaking, juniors is under twenties and younger. So under twenties, under eighteens, if we get to an under sixteens, all of that category, we can we consider juniors. And then kind of once you get into that under twenty two category, like I said before, you're more of a of an adult athlete. So yeah, we wouldn't consider you a junior athlete at that point any longer. And that applies for both men and women. Uh right, if a player isn't going to uni, does this make a difference in their chances of staying in the pathway and or progressing? In and of itself, it makes no difference at all. The effect on your development as a player. Is ultimately what determines progress in the pathway. Um if by going to uni, that increases or accelerates your development as a player, that's great. If it works the other way around, obviously, that's not great. If not going to uni. Means you fall behind others in in your age group, then obviously, you know, that's going to affect your your pathway standing. If you do something else, play, say, play for a Super League team or a Div one club team. That provides the same sort of opportunity for you to keep progressing and developing. Then that's fine too. Doesn't, it's not about going to uni specifically. It's about continued development as a player. Is the plan to send two different teams, one to Novotel and the other five nations, giving the oval up? Yeah, I already I mentioned that before, yes. Uh we do expect both men and women to send teams to both the five nations and to Novotel. How they split those teams up is up to the coaching staffs. I believe the men have kind of already made that decision how they want to do it, but I haven't heard yet from the women. What their intention is and and how to do that split. Any chance of a junior five nation? We actually were looking to do a junior five nation this year. Uh but unfortunately, the logistics of it and the finances weren't going to work out to run both adults and junior. Um and because the funding that we were getting from B V F, that's British Volleyball Federation, for those who don't know the acronym. Um was based on adult, based on seniors. We had to focus our attention on the seniors for this year, but we definitely want to do. Um age group stuff moving forward. Okay. Anything else? Kirk, anything I've? Said, haven't said?
No, I think. So good.
Um, okay. It was mentioned there may be a dice camp. We're still looking at that possibility. Uh the finances in this current year's budget. We're going to make that really difficult, but it is something that we're we're definitely exploring uh for the future. We we really wanted to take. Uh the dice kids to Italy. Probably in like February half term, something like that. Uh but that was continued upon getting funding from the the Turing funding, just kind of the replacement of Er-. Of Erasmus since Brexit, but unfortunately, our application for it uh was turned down. We'll try again though, I'm sure, because that would be a pretty awesome experience, I think. Anything else? Or have we hit all of this stuff? It's a lot of questions, a lot more questions than last time. There were hardly any last time. Okay. Well, if that's it, then I think we can wrap it up. Um this, obviously, this is being recorded, so. Once it's, once the the download's available, we'll get it up on the on the YouTube channel. So for those who weren't here that you might want to share the link to or you want to watch it again. Uh just because you li- enjoy the scintillating uh commentary and discussion, then you'd be more than welcome. I'm sure to go up on socials and obviously, if you just keep track of the volleyball in the YouTube channel, you'll see it appear there as well. Okay. Okay. Have a good night, everybody.